Basically, just a comment on YouTube with a link to this.
Okay.
So if people go to the wrong link and see that and see my face pressing no, because that's what that would end up being, they can follow. Yeah, now we're live. Yeah, that was kind of the best angle we got as far as having both the speaker. That is, yeah, so let's, well, let's actually check. So that. Oh, okay, okay. So yeah, it lights up, we're live. So I was waiting till activity happened. Oh, this is funny, so I should probably delete this video, because this was the one I put wrong. All right. It's good, and I have it preset, so when it switches to mission hearing, I press two and it'll.
Goodbye, of the United States of America, your republic, your stance, our nation, under God, in the physical, with everything and everything else.
So tonight, people will be meeting up with our public hearing, FY 2020 I-66 commuter choice program. For the information of commissioners and everybody in the room, the public hearing and the commission meeting are being streamed on YouTube Live this evening. Public can also access the feed through a link on the MBTC Facebook page. This is the third year that MBTC has engaged in identifying projects that use a force of revenue from the I-66 Inside the Beltway project, and fun efforts to help commuters on the corridor. The program is done in conjunction with the Commonwealth Transportation Board and the Virginia Department of Transportation. This year, MBTC received applications for more than $32 million in requests and had $20 million in available funds. These applications included $17 million in requests to long call bus service that will take people from as far as Gainesville, Percival, and the destination of Washington DC and the Pentagon. They also included $9.5 million in requests for projects that will provide better access to BRE and Metro Rail stations. Just under $2 million requests to fund tools and incentive programs to help people perform van tools and car tools and to take more transit. They included $3.7 million in requests to construct intersection improvements to help vehicles move through the corridor. They also include $800,000 for MBTC to administer the program, which is about 4%. Report on project performance and conduct the necessary public engagement activities necessary for a successful and accountable program. Each application was evaluated and scored based upon its ability to move more people through the corridor, mitigate diversion on parallel routes, maximize cost effectiveness, maximize transit operating funding, reduce single occupancy vehicle use, improve transportation network connectivity. These scores were presented to the commission last month at our meeting and are now part of the open house materials, and they also can be found on the MBTC website. MBTC will be selecting a list of proposed projects for funding at our next meeting on June 6th. Tonight is one of our three public meetings where we can hear from the public on the projects that are under consideration. Public can also comment on our website at novatransit.org. Our next public meeting will be a joint meeting with the Commonwealth Transportation Board on the evening of Monday, May 13th, at the VDOT Northern Virginia District Field Office in Fairfax. More information on that meeting is available on the MBTC website. Hopefully by now, everyone has had a chance to look at all the projects or the open house that was happening in the lobby, and we are interested in hearing your comments. For those of you who would like to speak, if you have not yet signed up, please add your name to the list of speakers at the table outside the door. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and if you're representing an organization, you can identify that as well. You will have three minutes to speak. Jay, who's over there, will give you a 30-second warning before your three minutes is up. And if you'd like to provide a written statement as well, please have 25 copies ready to hand out to the commissioner. We will now call the first speaker to the podium, and that is Deb Wake.
My name is Deb Wake, and I'm speaking on behalf of the National Capitol area League of Women Voters. Thank you for the opportunity to express our support for the commuter choice program. The League of Women Voters uses their positions, formed through consensus or control of our members, in order to advocate good practices and qualities. Our transportation positions can be downloaded on the League of Women Voters' National Capitol area website and greatly responsible objectives of the last I-66 commuter choice program to move more people, enhance transportation connectivity, improve transit service, reduce roadway congestion, and increase travel options. We support the use of tolls, fares, and other user fees to provide mass transportation for the benefit of a larger community. We welcome the reduction of air pollution resulting from the use of mass transit as opposed to single person vehicles. In addition, we believe regional planning should consider and include options for connectivity between modalities, whether pedestrian, bike, water, rail, or bus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Stuart Schwartz. Stuart will be followed by Audrey.
Thank you, Stuart Schwartz, publisher for Smarter Growth. First of all, I commend you on this package of projects which we strongly support. Commuter bus, the bike access transit, sluglines, which is just terrific, demand management, and especially the bus lane, dedicated bus lane, which we need many more of. I'll make a brief mention when it comes to the future discussion of 39595 projects that we put in a letter to MBTC and to Arlington and Alexandria about incorporating some advanced transit signal priority in that. I won't go into that in any detail. I understand some are concerned about this package for folks in transit, bike, and pedestrian projects, and would rather the money go to additional widening. But it's that focus on roads and road expansion over the years that has contributed so much to our traffic problems, and honestly, doomed to failure. The problem of induced demand is very real. The Victoria Transportation Policy Institute has accumulated every study ever done on that to show the case that most roads in a metro area will fill up within about five years. That's why demand management type solutions, pricing like we do, transit, land use, all have to be part of the package and a core part of the package. The problem with induced demand exists with hotlines as well. They may have temporary benefit for peak hour congestion, but that congestion certainly returns in general purpose lanes and on all approach roads to the hotlines. So it's fully appropriate that we fund transit, ped bike, demand management with this package. Lastly, there are some folks who have been talking in various venues like this about challenging smart scale and removing the land use component to that. What I'm talking about today is how exactly how important the land use component is to everything that we do. So it must remain a critical part of our smart scale evaluation, which is saving the taxpayers money and using the tax dollars more wisely. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Project Manager Alan Mutchler.
I'm Audrey Clement. I'm speaking on my own behalf as an Arlington Coalition of Sensible Transportation Director and not as a member of the Arlington Transportation Commission on which I sit. I certainly endorse the projects that I've seen tonight, particularly those with a busing component. But I want to remind you that unless tolling continues on I-66, many of these projects will not be funded in the future. Therefore, I'd like to report that recently, ACST made FOI made inquiries with the Virginia State Police, VSP, and VDOT to determine whether toll cheating on I-66 by solo motorists is inflating toll prices. Reportedly pursuant to the attached redacted memorandum of understanding between VDOT and VSP during the first year of tolling, VDOT reimbursed VSP in price of $550,000 from I-66 toll revenue for new VSP enforcement activities, including at least four additional state creepers to monitor entries along I-66 for toll cheaters. Under this memorandum of understanding, the VSP area commander is supposed to issue daily, monthly, and quarterly HOV enforcement reports with vehicle information and the time and date of violations to VDOT's I-66 Inside the Beltway Facility Manager. VSP indicated that it does not routinely do this. Instead, it produces database generated summary reports on request showing incidents and citations by incident timing. The incident summary report for the first 53 weeks of I-66 tolling shows that 1,326 HOV stops resulted in 702 citations. Dividing those 702 citations by 253 eight-hour tolling days in this 53-week period yields an average of 2.77 HOV citations for every eight hours of tolling. A 99% HOV compliance rate among the I-66 facilities, 14,000 daily trips, taken with an easy flex pass set in the HOV mode, would equate to 140 toll cheating trips a day, whereas VSP has cited fewer than three. Moreover, ACST suspects that HOV enforcement on I-66 is largely limited to the westbound travel lane, allowing eastbound solo motorists to routinely cheat. Populous outrage over the sky-high eastbound tolls threatens to undo Transform I-66, leading to more traffic congestion in Arlington and DC and even wider I-66 in the future. Unless elected officials in VDOT get serious about enforcing I-66 tolls, I fear that will happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan Mutchler, followed by Douglas Stewart.
Good evening. I'm Alan Mutchler. I'm speaking on my own behalf. Thank you for this opportunity to speak on the I-66 commuter choice projects. I support the Transform I-66 project to toll I-66 inside the Beltway during peak commuting hours and to reinvest that toll revenue in multimodal alternatives for I-66 commuters. This Transform project was based on a 2011 to 2013 two-year I-66 multimodal study in which local stakeholders, including transportation agencies, staffs of local governments and regional agencies, met monthly to review various alternatives for the future of I-66. And the current regime of tolling I-66 and reinvesting the toll revenue was determined by far to be the most effective, both in reducing congestion on I-66, moving more people, and reducing congestion on parallel routes. Tolling I-66 inside the Beltway has been widely unpopular among elected officials outside the Beltway, and partly, of course, their constituents believe that they don't have alternatives to driving alone on I-66. And that's partly been true because the governments outside the Beltway have not invested in these alternatives for 30 decades, 30 years. Finally, the toll revenue from the commuter choice program is actually providing these much-needed alternatives for express cost service. So, I'm sorry. And I appreciate that these projects are being evaluated for the cost effectiveness of moving more people. So I support the project scores that are assigned by staff to the various projects. That said, I think the I-66 bus, express bus projects would be much more cost-effective if they weren't being delayed and required to tan ahead on congested I-66, both outside the Beltway until the express lanes are built there, and going in the reverse commute direction which still is untold. This would allow you, if you could move the buses twice as fast going 60 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour, you could run twice as many routes with the same number of buses and the same driver expense. So thank you for this opportunity to comment on the projects. And again, I'll echo previous comments that the toll cheating inside the Beltway is a serious problem that needs to be examined in the morning period because of the construction that's going on right now. It reduces the heart of shoulders for four miles of developing people and not being pulled over. It's crazy that state troops have to sacrifice their lives and endanger people to stop people from something that's not endangering the public. But there needs to be a better solution, and there needs to be accountability for what the Virginia State Police are being reimbursed for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Douglas Stewart, followed by Jason.
Good evening. I'm Douglas Stewart. I'm speaking for the Virginia State Department. We fully support the I-66 Inside the Beltway tolling program and the allocation of toll revenue to increase people's options and ability to travel through the corridor. With the I-66 commuter choice program, the Commonwealth and MBTC have established a competitive and transparent process of investing toll revenue in improvements that cost-effectively benefit both actual and potential toll rate payers. Among the top scoring projects under consideration in this round are enhanced express bus service from Gainesville, Stone Ridge, Percival Government Center, benefiting commuters smaller than the region. We cannot build our way out of congestion. It's fiscally and environmentally unsustainable, and it doesn't work. The commuter choice program is a model for addressing congestion by providing lasting benefits and fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our final speaker is Doug Jason Stanford.
Hi, my name is Jason Stanford. I'm the Executive Director of the Northern Virginia Transportation Alliance. As the visionary leader for regional transportation solutions in Northern Virginia for more than 30 years, the Alliance appreciates the opportunity to comment on the proposed projects for fiscal year 2020 of the I-66 commuter choice program. I-66 is an extremely important transportation corridor for Northern Virginia, connecting Virginia's first, second, and fourth largest jurisdictions to employment, recreation, and other opportunities in Arlington and Washington DC. While I-66 inside the Beltway for many years was limited to high occupancy vehicles, during peak periods, the decision to expand access to drivers of single occupancy vehicles willing to pay a toll price for congestion has been tremendously beneficial to our region. While SOV drivers now have access to a new travel option, the tolls paid by these drivers can be used to improve travel options for everyone in the I-66 corridor. The Alliance has long supported establishing a regional express bus network as one of the most beneficial investments for our region. To that end, we applaud the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission's prioritization process, which identified new and enhanced regional bus service in the I-66 corridor serving Prince William, Loudon, Fairfax, and Arlington Counties as the top priorities. Of the $20 million available for the fiscal year 2020, the Alliance urges you to adopt all $17 million in requested funding for enhanced and expanded bus service. In addition, the Alliance encourages the commission to consider prioritizing Arlington County's request to fund the Lee Highway HOV and bus-only lane project over Arlington County's request to fund expanded TDM outreach to the I-66 corridor. Both projects had similar I-66 commuter choice program scores and funding requests. However, Arlington County commuters services currently receives millions in federal, state, local, and regional dollars each year to support TDM services in Arlington County, which includes the I-66 corridor. In contrast, the Lee Highway HOV and bus-only lane project would improve bus service for up to 25 arped Metro Bus and Loudon County Transit Buses per hour during peak periods for the foreseeable future. As a result, the project complements the other new and enhanced bus services that would be funded in fiscal year 2020 by the I-66 commuter choice program. Thank you for your time and consideration of these comments. I hope that the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission will continue to invest in the projects that will do the most to relieve congestion and move more people throughout the I-66 corridor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Thank you, everybody, for your comments this evening. As I mentioned earlier, the public comment period for the I-66 programs will continue through March 15th. The commission will be asked to take action on the proposed program or project at our next meeting on June 6th. So if members of the public are interested, welcome to come back and follow that discussion on our live feed. This will conclude our public hearing, and we will now move immediately into our commission meeting. So welcome commissioners to our main meeting. There are several action items to consider tonight. In addition to our consent agenda, we're going to be passing, hopefully, a resolution of accommodation for our DRPT Director of Commissioners and former DELL delegate Lemongen for their efforts to help establish the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission. We're also going to authorize actions or take to present the project considered for funding of the FY 20 commuter choice program and the Commonwealth Transportation Board at the workshop then this month. We'll get into more detail on that, including the entire program of projects, since the commission won't be taking action until next month on this project for executive funding. And we'll be hearing a presentation by the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission's CEO, David Mayer, and our usual reports from our robotics and working committee members, our DRP Director, Adam Stanbury. I would also like to ask for the commission that MBTC was notified by the Virginia Senate Servant in Arms that Senator Richard Black of Loudon has been appointed to the MBTC. So we look forward to him joining us in the future because he remains here in term. So our first action item is to approve the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Please go forth in the meeting. Move. Seconded. Yep. Second. Any discussion on the minutes? On the favor of approval of the minutes, please say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Our next action item is to approve the consent agenda, which is authorizing the Executive Director to send a letter certifying certain documents from WADA required by state codes and approving Resolution 2382, proclamation of fourth and the 35th Annual Public Service recognition week taking place May 5th through 11th, 2019. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Move and seconded. Mr. Blaugrave, and I guess Ms. Blaugrave will say. Any discussion on the consent agenda? On the favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so moving on to item number four, which is the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission. At last month's MBTC meeting, the DRPT announced that the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission was certified of the Travel Transit Administration on March 18th. Over the past two years, we have received monthly updates from Director Mitchell on progress of establishing WMSC for the meeting certification deadline on April 15th, 2019. We're pleased to have the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission Chief Executive Officer, David Mayer, here to brief the commission on the role and mission of the WMSC. But first, we want to recognize two individuals who play a key role in the establishment of the WMSC. So our first action item this evening, and I will say, this, the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission was also something that the Council of Governments had a lot to do with, including during my time as Chair, and Ms. Blaugrave was chairing our Metro Committee. So we were following the trials and tribulations of this, and worked very hard with our counterparts in DC and Maryland. So it really is a tremendous accomplishment. We really do want to recognize those in Virginia that are most responsible for it. Delegate Lemongen is not able to attend our meeting this evening, former Delegate Lemongen. So we will present this to him next month. But I would ask that Director Mitchell join me up front, and I will read the resolution and then ask for a motion to approve it. So, subject is commending DRPT Director Jennifer Mitchell and former Delegate James Lemongen for their efforts to help establish the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission. Whereas in 2012, Congress passed the Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century, the MAP-21, requiring all states with rail transit systems to identify or establish an independent agency to ensure that the rail transit systems within their borders adhere to a new safety framework with the deadline of April 15th, 2019, to establish an agency to handle their new safety oversight responsibilities and receive federal certification of the oversight program. Whereas in the 2017 General Assembly Session, Delegate James Lemongen introduced HB 2136, authorizing Virginia to become a signatory to the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission Interstate Compact, which established an independent state safety oversight authority for the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Authority rail system and was signed into law on May 24th, 2017. Whereas during the same time, the Department of Rail and Public Transportation Director Jennifer Mitchell served as the unofficial leader for the regional development of the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission, enabling legislation, using her expertise to help negotiate compromises between Virginia, Maryland, and the District of Columbia to ensure deadlines are met and requirements of each jurisdiction were reflected in legislation. Whereas Delegate James Lemongen and Director Mitchell split actions during the legislative development phase demonstrated to the US Department of Transportation and the local and congressional delegations that progress was being made on passing legislation. Whereas in spring and summer of 2017, the Commonwealth of Virginia, Maryland, and the District of Columbia jointly crafted an agreement creating the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission to serve as a state safety oversight agency for the metro rail system, followed by Congress formally approving the compact, which was ratified in August of 2017. Whereas Director Mitchell continued to play an instrumental role in establishing the WMSC by assisting with the development of the Interstate Compact and WMSC bylaws and operating policies, and by helping to create a timeline and process to recruit board members and staff to elect officers, which culminated in the first WMSC meeting on February 7th, 2018. Whereas on March 18th, 2019, the Federal Transit Administration certified the state safety oversight program of the WMSC, which is now responsible for overseeing and enforcing safety rail practices on Metro Rail, reviews and approves WADA's metro rail safety plans and operations to ensure that the rail system complies with federal and state safety rules and regulations, and identifies safety deficiencies and oversees WADA's efforts to address deficiencies. Now therefore be it resolved that the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission hereby commands DRPT Director Jennifer Mitchell and former Delegate James Lemongen for their efforts to help establish the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission. Be it further resolved that MBTC prepared copies of this resolution for presentation to Jennifer Mitchell and James Lemongen as an expression of gratitude and an appreciation of their work to make the metro system safer for all commuters in the Washington DC metropolitan region.
Thank you very much.
Voicemail. So I will now actually call for a motion to approve the resolution. Move and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Congratulations. We really are grateful to you, Jennifer, as well as Delegate Lemongen's box of resolution. And we did do a resolution for tape and types, but I also want to specifically thank you for all the time and effort that you put into this on behalf of MBTC, following and tracking this progress. With that, let me introduce Mr. Mayer, the CEO of the Metro Rail Safety Commission. He's the first ever CEO, of course, of the WMSC, and he joined WMSC in June of 2018. Before coming to WMSC, Mr. Mayer served as the first ever chief safety officer of the New York Metropolitan Transit and Transportation Authority, MTA, positioning now in December 2014 through May 2018. The MTA operates North America's largest transportation network. Mr. Mayer was responsible for the enterprise-wide safety strategy to ensure the safety of employees, customers, and the general public. For that, Mr. Mayer worked for the National Transportation Safety Board, NTSB, beginning in 1991, where he held several different roles, and finally became the Managing Director of the NTSB in 2009. Following Mr. Mayer's presentation, we will allow time for questions and answers. Sir, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. My thanks to Jennifer and the entire village leadership here for the Washington Metro Rail Safety Commission. I'm sure that work created my arrival here, but it was something, because I'm very much interested in metro rail safety management, NTSB is something that I was following from afar in New York, and it's something that I was very, very interested in. So to everyone who had a role in creating the organization, authoring the compact, and contributing heavily to the organization, my personal gratitude. So I thought I would do a little bit of an overview. I mean, you did just your several various pluses.
I feel like I have a great.
And getting a little bit of an overview. States with rail transit are required to have state safety oversight agencies. So we are the nation's newest state safety oversight agency. We have 30 sister agencies, so 31 of us total nationwide. The predecessor entity here prior to that form one legislation that was just mentioned was the TOC, which tries state oversight committee. But as was shown in the investigation and the reviews, the TOC, while extraordinarily well attention, lacked authority, and the TOC is really a community, was not in some of the areas we are now. So after the Fort Toc accident in 2009, and actually one legislation was enacted, and it included several very specific requirements for state safety oversight agencies. Vehicle 15, 2019 certification deadline for programs was a major requirement, and certainly certain forcing authorities and powers was another requirement that required legislative changes throughout the country. After the Font Plaza tunnel smother effect in 2009, the NTSB called somewhat urgent while the Department of Transportation defined a different safety oversight structure for overseeing WADA. Rail transit is an odd mode of transportation in that in other modes of transportation, like airline transportation or FRA regulated railroad transportation, the federal government provides safety oversight directly through federal authorities who are inspectors. Rail transits handle difficulty inside of the state safety oversight audit, and recognizing some of the deficiencies associated with the TOC who are part of transportation in late 2015, assumed federal safety oversight of WADA. Until such time, there's still a secret that's still left and certified. Certainly, an enormous amount of work was written, and I always keep doing to write the comments. the, the compact that provides us our, uh, enablement of legislation and our, our authorities, just to, just to review a few of those that are particularly important. The WMSC is established as an independent entity, uh, that is, is not a part of Ramada in any way. We are a standalone agency. In fact, of the thirty-one state safety oversight agencies in the country, we are the only state safety oversight agency that's not, not housed in a larger agency like a Department of Transportation or Public Utilities Commission. So we are the only standalone state safety oversight agency. We, uh, our, our commission is populated by two commissioners from each of the three jurisdictions, plus an alternate from each jurisdiction. And, uh, we, we have a general safety oversight role along with enforcement powers that are not outlined in Ramada. Well, some of those enforcement powers are the ability to, to take all of portion of the, the system out of service for safety reasons, to direct Ramada Inspector General to conduct certain investigative work on her behalf, to prioritize spending at Ramada on safety projects, to enforce corrective action plans, to ensure that, that continuous improvement is, is being made toward safety, and we also have the ability to remove vehicles or, or infrastructure elements for working safety critical people from service if necessary in order to save them. So, um, I started back in June. In order to file an application for certification, which was due on October first of last year, we, we had to leave the list at, and we succeeded at, at doing that. We hired a great team of rail transit, uh, safety experts, uh, and we filed our application on September twenty-fifth for certification. We entered into a month-long, uh, transition process at that point. It is of March eighteenth, uh, the MTA announced that we, uh, became fully certified as a SAA. So that certification actually went into effect at eleven-thirty PM, close of revenue service, uh, for, for March eighteenth. And at dawn on March nineteenth, our inspectors arrived at sites in the system to begin duly inspections under our newly certified authority, and we pointed that out as a part of this important goal, really wanting to be able to, to communicate to, to Ramada about the, 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 a new era of this, this, uh, safety oversight and, and, and. So, now that we're certified, what do we do with that? So, so, and, and, and I've been safe all my life, and I fully recognize that that isn't border pursuit, we have no idea, right? How does somebody do the safety? And, and so each state safety oversight agency has six core functions that we're required to accomplish. So these are inspections, safety event investigations, emergency management, audits, corrective action plans that I mentioned, and safety certification. So just a, so, so feel that each one. Inspections, like I mentioned, we, uh, we frequently come to the rail operations control center to, to conduct inspections and observations of what's, uh, doing there, uh, what's being done there. We also do inspections of car maintenance, uh, car rail operations, as well as, uh, a variety of other elements of the system to, to, uh, to, to look for findings and look for non-congruous issues. We, uh, participate in safety event investigations, so like any transit property, Ramada has some things that go bump and down on a, on a non-cryptic basis. They have stood up as they're required to, safety investigation team to within each of these, and, and they do that pursuant to our direction. So we, we provide instructions and requests to work with some Ramada very closely, investigations that are not popular at the moment. We participate, um, as an observer in emergency management drills that are currently held on a quarterly basis. We conduct an audit program to, to have formal, um, safety audits done, providing various specific kind of, uh, safety programs going on. As of that moment, um, we, uh, are administering a program of corrective action plans and area improvement FTA. And safety certifications is another very important thing, or a number of projects that will remove the transportation elements online. Obviously, the largest of which on our lives in space to the silver line, and so we have safety certification responsibilities with respect to, to, uh, providing a complete safety protocol in all places that we, to our revenue service. So just to kind of close out with a couple of, some interim priorities, um, we inherited about your kind of activities for the FTA, um, the, 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 the one hundred and one corrective action plans that are being worked by Ramada. So, so in our first six months of certified existence, it's our intent to work our way through and reporting off publicly on the two most corrective action plans, uh, and a number of them, including the closed out, uh, with Ramada having successfully developed work that's required at Ramada. We also carried about sixty open safety event investigations, so in our public meetings that our commissioners do, we present those investigations to the commissioners who they are adopting, she's completed. We, since being certified about five weeks ago, there have been some safety events at Ramada that have attracted our attention, and we have asked Ramada to pay some special investigators looking at the act of Ramada being very closely. Some examples during the week of April first, there were three trains on, on the blue orange lines, and I'm misroutting the opposite color line. So, so a misrouting of the train is not in and of itself a safety event, we know it's certainly an inconvenience for passengers on the train, um, but an agency's preparations and procedures in response to a, uh, mystery, and it either can be done in a safe way or can be done in a way that exacerbates an emergency. So we're, uh, we don't have a dependent on that, and we're working on, to, to those three mysteries. And on April twenty-sixth, there was, uh, an undesired uncoupling of revenue equipment that was not in the service, just about twenty minutes after the opening operations ceased for the day, uh, the train set to the port. So we're, we're looking into that very closely, exploring some issues on pre-trip inspection, and, 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 uh, uh, closure management, so there's, there's, so, so, we don't think we'd have there, uh, taking a look at that. And also, um, on April twenty-fifth, we became aware of a, uh, a, a worldly worker protection incident in which a train encountered, uh, workers on the road, but all were near the road that, um, just passed Crystal City Station and just turned out, it was a city station. We get out, uh, the train out, and we're having to brief to expect a little bit of workers on the road, uh, which is required by Ramada procedures. So, um, that becomes us impersonal, because our people are on the road, and so, so we have, uh, asked Ramada to, uh, to answer that event. I also mentioned a few minutes ago that we, we are only working on audit programs, with the audit programs, which is to give you a flavor of that in July, and anything else is, is probably to the body. In July, we will begin a, a track, and a training audit and audit of the track. And it is determined that the train is, is to track containers and track inspectors. In September, we'll do a traction power audit, I don't have this many relevant information, uh, traction power is, uh, to the system. And in November, kind of related to all of those investigations, we'll be doing an audit of roadway worker protection training. We intend to be a very transparent organization. We have monthly, uh, public meetings with our commission, we'll be reporting out in more detail on all of this, uh, if you want to, uh, you know, our safety journey along with Ramada are very transparent. Uh, and I should mention too, uh, for that, that, that Ramada has been extraordinarily cooperative and transparent with its, uh, very, very, uh, efficient plan. So I guess the last things I would say is if you haven't taken a look at our website, www.wmsc dot gov, um, nice web site design, and lots of posters, and lots of other information that would be popular within that, and lots of news that, and if you remember the Twitter verse, uh, if you follow us at at Metro Rail Safety, you can see about which, uh, what we're doing from time to time. I have all these pictures, or pictures, uh, that we've tweeted out during, uh, during our rides, it's been certified. The front, uh, shows, uh, car inspection, track inspection, maintenance inspection, all conducted by our staff members. On the back, we have another track inspection, yard inspection, all conducted by our staff. You know, the picture on the floor on left, uh, is just before our first, uh, this table, just before our first public viewing, uh, as the certified investigators are pushing to alternate, so, uh, we've created, uh, today, the meeting. And the picture on the right was at the meeting where we, uh, have the resolution that we might, uh, just in September, uh, about the inspection, perspective, and, uh, expressing our appreciation, all, uh, that, uh, has been, which is, uh, right now.
Thank you very much. This was a great update. Questions, problems, uh, our? Yes, sir.
See, this is your field. In, in this field, is there a standard or ratio to mechanics safety products that are opposed to human? They keep on, well, it's called by mechanics and people?
Yeah, um, oddly enough, I'm an insurance psychologist, I trained. So I see, I see the people in all of this. So it's only, in my opinion, it's only a level of extraction difference. You know, if, if, if the person operating the train makes an error, then you know which person made the error, but, but if a piece of equipment is installed improperly, you know, corruption is allowed to be made, uh, you know, a piece of equipment, you know, it may not be the train operator who made that error, but where errors happen elsewhere in the system. So trains that rail is a product that, uh, in, in most transportation, because of the way it's been regulated over the years, if you walk into any airline, they use the same technology for everything, they fly the same airplanes, they have the same corporate structures, just because this is following the FAA regulations, every transit rail system is different, and they all have their own challenges, they all have, uh, different levels of technology, different levels of maintenance that have been performed over the years. So it's very, very difficult, and trains and their properties try to compare themselves to each other, because the, the, the more equipments at the table, there are those in the competition.
Okay. No, it's not, I just want to look a little more back on it.
Yes, Mr. Sire. Some areas that you have?
So we're very small, we have a total staff of eleven, um, but we also are augmented by two competitively awarded staffing contracts. So as we do these audits that I mentioned, we'll issue task orders against the staffing contracts, we'll additional staff on work, and we'll, uh, as we, as we, as we.
Is there sort of an industry standard that will, um, agency, uh, we should decide?
So, yes, I, I don't know that I can speak really confidently to it, but, but because this is not an unfounded mandate, because there are federal grantings available for state safety oversight, and, and it has a formula, there is actually a staffing assessment that's done for each, uh, each entity. Like I said, we have six core function areas, that's just part of this, uh, the, the, the show, Melissa, and I said it to the force, to get certified, was to actually build out and show that we could work our program in our six core function areas with the staffing that we were planning for, actually working out how many inspections, how many hours a, a, a month to do this task and that task. And, and we built, at that end, we built the staffing model.
So, you have this, this, maybe that's, uh, standard, standard, general, uh, practice?
Yes, you have to have that, I think, if you get certified.
Second question, is your jurisdiction extended cyber security issues, you know, the types of, 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 uh, so, along with some of mine, uh, cyber security, the, the, the time, and services, that he was in data, and his background, it's my problem. You get, you get a system, you know, not throws at, and that's a real issue, so.
And transit properties are on a mission of increasing targets, whereas we see. However, our, uh, before maybe the compact is, is exclusively safety as opposed to security. So I tend to define, uh, 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 easy memory, uh, safety, the lack of safety is something bad, but, something, uh, goes bad, uh, but not intentional. Uh, security is that people that have anything that's been going wrong on purpose, and so cyber security is all.
I'll follow up, and, and so, and that will be one feature that, um, and if you define safety, is safety with passengers and the stations, for example, even ranch and the whole police, and, um, this is always an event, you know, and, 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 stations established, uh, and how, would you, is that part of your safety job?
Yes and no. Again, you know, unintentional stabbing, um, is, is, is something that doesn't fall within safety per se. However, uh, following federal transit regulations, anytime someone is removed from the system from medical attention, that is an event that's reported to us. So it's an event, a death, specific event was reported to us as required, but, but we don't have an investigative role there because it's a, this.
You mean that, well, and donations to Metro and those, like that?
I don't really mind not, um, but it may, it may move outside our area of expertise.
One link, um, you have a system in place that drives, uh, as if this slide safety is, like, you know, it's up to be confidential?
Yes, when you visit our website, um, you'll see a report, the safety concern button, and, and, uh, people are already catching on to that, and we have a number of safety concerns, not huge, but a number of safety concerns that are reported to that, too, and we're tracking the investigation, yeah.
So why would, I mean, if that's available to people?
I, I'm, I'm listening with help. Uh, we have, we tweeted about it, it was quite a, uh, other word, it was quite a community on Twitter that follows Ramada, so, so that, uh, otherwise, yeah. So, in fact, that's, we have to reach you, and we really are, and, uh, but, but certainly we're reaching, uh, how we can, that you.
Let me just see if anybody else, and then I'll get you. Okay, all right, Mr. Mayer.
So, uh, this is a little, this is generally, this is just curious. Um, yeah, so I think my biggest concern with that is that you're layers on, uh, making sure, you know, things are being done right, like we expect to do a little type role, is that obviously you don't want to slow up the needed work on the safety side. Um, how do you feel that balance is going to work out? And you obviously have time and assets certification, how do you feel that balance works out? To make sure that it is being done, that it is being done right? And then how important is your role in, you think, identifying problems and needing to correct?
Uh, I think that ladder board is, is extremely, um, you know, by, by pushing Ramada to, you know, particularly at that, at events such as that uncoupling, uncoupling of misused trains, which honestly haven't been deep dived into, or at least not recently, uh, I think that will provide an opportunity for us, uh, together with Ramada, to discover areas to continue improvement. The model of rail transit safety oversight, or there's one officiating on the program, so, so there's not like a spot you get when you're dying, you mean, you walk home, where we're always nudging toward, you know, safety performance improvement. And if I understood your, your first question correctly, I think you were considering that by adding bureaucratic layers or oversight, that we might?
That matters, like, certainly, it's asking if there, if there would be, uh.
So, so the, on one hand, bureaucratic issues are a program standard, which is a written document that, that we were certified to, specifically to ask Ramada that where corrective action is necessary, it, it, it needs to have our approval, unless there's an urgency to it, in which case they should start, uh, working immediately. But that said, having spent time in safety at, at the FTA and the work, I, I, I know that no transit property has to be told to wait or not to wait before they correct a safety deficiency. If they discover something that is corrected, uh, much as I do expect an notification of Ramada, I also expect them to be telling me what they're all ready to do and fix it, and I have other complaints from Ramada.
Well, I, I only have a question, and this might be more of a, uh, Ramada question, do you, because this is a bigger vision on safety. Um, is there any proprietary measures that your, your, uh, technology, actually, as it came to, the technology, that they're sort of, you know, Loudon, that's working on transit, technology, sensors, and people with bikes, and all sorts of that, not necessarily less, but I assume that that technology probably are in some way, you say, probably making further advanced injury, for language possible, safety issues. Uh, is that anything that, uh, that you could be looking at as a, like, way back?
If, if we detect that there is, uh, uh, an issue, and I, I know that, uh, Conriscus, the sister property, and we work for, you know, some transit authority, designs and studies, and sensors, and enhanced technology, for protection, and, 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 it's a very challenging thing to do it well, and we're interfacing those into systems that , that control train activities, you know, and need it to respond quickly. Ramada, though, has a very high level of sophistication in its automation, we look across the country, at, at, at our transit capabilities, and some of that really hasn't been fully used since the, the, the accident, and, and we're focusing within Ramada on, on hearing some of that automation back online, that will help them, will help them in safety, but will also help them in service delivery, which is important to them, and, and because they're bringing the system back, uh, and at least, if, if this is, if, if, uh, project will, because they're interested in bringing the system back, it's essentially their unused components, exactly, and we're going to treat that as our, as a safety certification type of system, essentially.
Okay, you know, I have a question, but I know you had a follow-up.
Yeah, it was just a, oh, this, this intersection of safety and security is something interesting with me. I assume that, if we, we, since, a lot, a lot of security would be a safety issue, both physical security and cyber security. So, I assume, I think what I heard you say is that if you look at, 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 at the study or whatever, that might occur, you wouldn't follow up, but you would say there seems to need to be more security, a, and then it would be off. You wouldn't follow up, but you would say, there seems to need to be more security, and, and then it would be off, hand it off to somebody else. Well, I'll.
I, I think it's a fair point to, 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 to make the point that there really is no bright line. I mean, what is exactly safety, what is exactly security, there's no question. In response to a superior event that is totally outside of our purview, can make things safer or can make things less safe for, for customers in the system. And so their decision making, say, in response to a superior event that hinges on, on safety in the system, then that certainly will be.
So when there is an issue, um, it's reported to who exactly?
So, so.
Well, it's almost reported to you, and then, how does that?
So I guess maybe there's, there's a couple of different, uh, answers to the question. Then there is, if there is a, you know, Ramada has, you know, in front of it right now, the defined matrix of specific incidents. And when any of those occur, they're required to notify us, because we're, we're, some orders are given out, and.
And, and if they don't do that, is there any way for you to find that out?
Uh, yes, um, maybe not with perfect precision, but like I said earlier, we'll, we'll laugh again, but like I said earlier, you know, the, the transit system here is meaningful from throughout the country. During revenue service hours, you know, people are operating through the system connected to the generators. So, so all day long, um, there, there is the likelihood that, that customers will be talking about, you know, on for what has just occurred, you know, the scattered train, or, or, uh, the signal problem at a particular location, that has been, happened for a period of time, and we have actually, we actively cross reference those to notifications that we get. Plus, the safety office is not as good as the Ramada required to report to us. Although, we, we take delivery every day on logs, and, and, and other reports from throughout the system, and of course, reference those with the, so it's not perfect. Um, but we have, um, been able to point to Ramada and say, this is something we were, uh, talking about in the partner channels, and this, this, uh, set up again, and we're encouraged to do that. There's also the safety concerns, or pretty safety concern, that not, you know, specific incident, that maybe something that is a concern particularly to a Ramada customer. And we are also tracking those, and, and following that, um, through the best of chances for Ramada to, to resolve this.
If there is a point in time where a recommendation is made, or something, or I have a lot of staff that's not agreed, what is the process for sort of working that out?
The, there's, there's a lot of authority in the contact that fits out the authority to order Ramada to take corrective actions. Um, I think it'd be a healthier situation, and both relationships, and just, just bring Ramada to where it wants to be in its safety journey, if we could, like, inside. And I have a reason to do it, but on the other hand, if, if we don't, we do have the power to order Ramada to take corrective action, or we take other, uh, execution fines and situations, and do, uh, other, other.
I was gonna say, is there a threat of funding being withheld, or that kind of thing, ultimately, or?
Um, if.
I don't think we'd ever get to that point either, just.
You know, I, I, I think that, that our, the FTA, uh, it's hard to say, they had that blog tool of recording all of the time or whatever, and, and I think one of the things that, that was a, then, you know, the safety, or, say, role of Ramada, is that they needed a more surgical set of tools, uh, to be able to take a whole range of actions, and, and, uh, the, 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 the content really provided this, right, set of tools. Obviously, I'm hopeful that they have to resort to those, uh, frequently, but, but we need to.
So I, I know that you're aware of the, um, discussion regarding, um, hours for metro, and leaving sufficient time so that maintenance can be accomplished. Would your organization have any role in bringing them, if you thought that, that a puzzle did not give Ramada sufficient time, um, to provide kind of maintenance, that you felt that they need to, um, be able to do it? Would you have any involvement in that?
Yes, we would, uh, we would, through an action of our commissioners, you know, we would have the ability to, to take an action, I mean, this was exactly what, if we, if we knew that, that, you know, Ramada was unable to accomplish, uh, the maintenance. And, and you know, it says maintenance, and, but it's really maintenance and inspection. There's critical travel prevention inspection, it's not overnight, it can only be accomplished if there's heavy power damage, can't be accomplished, let's say, single track. So, so there's, if, if, and Ramada is about a fifth of the way through doing a complete inspection of the local system, that has to be done, so that's a really important effort for us to watch. And, and we, we want attention, and obviously, we're agnostic with respect to the specific hours of operation, if that in itself falls as a important issue for the region, it's not a safety issue. Um, but the, the safety issue for us is, is designing that maintenance inspection program, particularly those parts of the, the, the colleges, in a way that, that, that continues.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for your time, um, you know, please don't be a stranger with us. I think we all have the shared responsibilities for our local governments representing our interests in metro, and we do so for our board members, but we also support the big funding partner. So we have a, a lot of, a lot of stake, and we appreciate your work and the work of the, uh, committee. Thank you very much. All right. And we will segue into our, uh, metro updates, uh, starting with the report from the chair of the Ramada Committee. What about the president?
This is chairman, the, uh, Ramada Committee, uh, seventeen, and obviously, the staff, because of the, um, information, the, uh, relief, and, uh, we got the answers, so, for, for, and conditions of Ramada. It also, the, you know, related chapters, and, and talking about, um, other expectations of Ramada, or reporting to the, to see, um, who's, so, that we can dedicate the capital funds. The committee is providing feedback on staff, upon policy, and, and making, and, and, by rebuilding, by the ship, better weekend services, and parking, compared policy changes. Um, this is a report, uh, using this, the opportunity to have a data discussion with the committee, as well as how to address, uh, the, the, and, uh, we will be coming back to that next meeting with the committee. And, uh, we expect, uh, to get information, working with your official personnel staff, with their research background to, to, at, 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 at this conference discussion. Um, I think this should be a load student, may have changed, they, um, they, uh, do, but, I think they strike off with the, uh, the, the, the strength of the.
Indeed, and I guess the one thing that I would add, uh, is, for the members of the commission, this is going to be a, a committee level discussion for preparation of this report, which is required from the zone assembly. However, every member of the commission should bill free, to vote and attend the meetings, and if you can't, just to provide input on areas that you wish for us to look at. Uh, we're in a period of time now, where staff is doing research based on the direction that the metro committee gave at the last meeting. So I would say it is timely now, I wouldn't wait too much longer. So for all of you out there who have particular items that you want us to boil down on, remember that the goal here is to find areas where we think metro could improve, from a financial standpoint, or from an operational standpoint, uh, this is the time to kind of voice those, um, and do so through the, through the committee process, through Andrew, and, and, so. Uh, okay, the report, any questions? I want to record from the Virginia Ramada Board members, Christian, that was this evening, but Paul is here.
Okay, um, as you know, like, we have the budget, the last month, so there's a little bit of a lull here for the next, uh, uptake and activity, but there are a few items that we did want to highlight for you. Uh, the board did approve, uh, parking fee waivers, uh, at three stations during the summer shutdown, along with another lot, uh, including Springfield, the Van Dorn, Huntington stations. So that just started, uh, you know, the first day of the shutdown, and, uh, I know Ramada is working with, with two, or two, or two, or two stations, uh, to, to implement that program, and they're getting to work out, uh, to, to, uh, so. Uh, the executive committee, uh, which I serve on, uh, we, uh, accepted a, a OIG report on Ramada's timekeeping implementation. It was a new timekeeping software product that we brought on, uh, it was not implemented properly. Um, and the OIG, uh, called to the, the investigation, um, it performed six recommendations, uh, management accepted all six, and it was maybe one of them, uh, approved, uh, decided to modify it, but it aren't implementing all those, and they're on track to, 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 uh, correction. Uh, Steve McMillan, who's worked with federal reps, and I are working on a document, specific to the, the, the general's office. There was a request, uh, from Maryland, uh, legislation, their dedicated funding, which required Ramada to, you know, update on what we did, uh, to be, uh, be, if you will, the OIG office. Uh, so Steve and I, uh, which, obviously, is the secretary, to produce that document. But what we're finding is the way we've been drafting it, is it's also been very helpful, because the OIG, which you might see in the newspaper, or what we call the media, uh, has been a point of discussion as we're at this, to create, uh, so, when the, 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 the funding comes up, um, you know, the, the, several offices are just there, potentially giving some efficient dollars into the OIG, there's a lot of questions, so, you know, drafting this out, and it's been very useful. Maybe the media will, some offices, you know, give us some, uh, 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 so we'll be more, uh, that, and we'll, and we'll come out in more form, and, and, you know, find out as happy. Uh, you may have heard, uh, last week, the Ramada announced that they're consolidating, uh, offices. Uh, first, the headquarters site, uh, is up in lease, we decided ultimately to keep. The product of, of, we're something like, if you, or, 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 nine years, at least, uh, the property said, in fact, someone will take it over, but Ramada is sort of, uh, able to come up with that. Uh, and then they're consolidating offices, which two sites, from Maryland to Carrollton, and, and, uh, this, uh, this, uh, office consolidation plan. Uh, this plan will save tens of millions of dollars, if you, like, ten, twenty year period, for, for, ten, twenty years, maybe. Um, so, uh, you know, that's a, that's a significant step, and just the way you, you align this organization and how they operate and functions, and, 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 you know, various offices, and, 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 and. And then last little, like, the two things, um, summer shutdown, as you, I'm sure you've heard, uh, it's, it's ended until September eighth, six days, or business days, and all of it, as anticipated, when that's related specifically to the work that's needed to be done at, uh, 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 I was going to be sorry. Um, and so, you know, once I got in there, I just realized that, uh, there was some pretty extensive work that we need to be done with that station, um, and it's required, you know, more than this, to, you know, to get that done. And even with that, it'll be an aggressive timeline, you know, get it done within that period, but, the, uh, the contract is pretty complicated. They will be able to do that. Two other quick things, uh, wireless access throughout the metro system will be up to seventy percent, uh, smooth through tunnels, that will along with a little orange, uh, tunnels downtown, and, uh, little lines, uh, food, petanum city, petanum, uh, which is, so, uh, that's, that's a big step with, 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 and then, David, to your point, we had a brief update. Not an update, I just made a mention of the fact that Ramada recently did hire an IT professional who's able to look in, uh, that area and do a pretty thorough examination of that, uh, has an expertise in cyber, uh, security, who comes from the FBI, is one of the leaders, uh, of, 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 yeah, has excessive, uh, background, you know, in IT, so. I mean, yeah, we can get you more information, but, uh, we, 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 we.
All right, thanks for the report, questions, comments, come to the rock.
Uh, Paul.
Natural in the news, we've heard a comment on the request, uh, for the surveys that we've done, the question says, back to survey that, uh, uh, the, uh, yeah, I, I, I think, I, I don't know, people haven't gotten the, the brief thing out yet. I probably know those questions you do sometimes, uh, I know that there has been a formal, well, there was an initial request. And now there's, I think it's actually a lawsuit, uh, it's a lawsuit.
So would that information be available to more questions or asks, the replies that were somewhat related? And, uh, the solidity, you know, how competent you are for that?
Uh, I can imagine. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I can't imagine if it was going to be available.
A lot of you that can be available.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think specifically what this individual was looking for is all individual surveys and other backgrounds, materials, and, you know. Yeah, yeah.
What's good? Paul, can you explain the, you, you, the headquarters property, you know, the ninety nine release of, uh, so. It's got significant financial differences, so it's not, you know, a modern number now, it's in the capital fund. And I guess would be the least, uh, operating part of the, what was the thinking as to why you'd be carrying?
I mean, I think it was just for the income generation, I mean, they had expensive, you know, analysis, it was to, like, sale. Yeah, it was after lease, you know, the value of that.
And yes, and, uh, I remember discussing. Right, so what was the say about that?
Again, we got a brief thought about that, but I would call it.
Yeah, I'm just kind of worried because what I saw in the paper, I don't know if anyone else, you know, just, and I'm not saying it's the wrong choice, I don't know.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, I mean, at the end of the day, when they did the analysis. Yeah, yeah, when they did the analysis, it was definitely, yeah, again, it gets us to.
Yes, sir. Uh, I actually got asked this today, so I just wanted to follow up considering if you have any special, uh, folks, I could get the instructions. In terms of, when we make the project, we, uh, show the rocks, which I was like, we need to do it in three weeks in advance. So we should, in case for that, you know, be, cause I'm, uh, here.
Yeah, good. You, uh.
Sure, as far as the outreach and all?
Yeah.
So that also do, next week, they're going to start to distribute in the station brochure, the stations.
With the show rocks?
Yes, it'll have everything, there'll be stations, specific brochures, the heat stations. It'll be distributed starting next week for the two weeks in advance.
Starting next week for the two weeks prior to?
Right, so about two weeks in advance, and then also the first two weeks of the shutdown itself. And so both in advance and.
And, and again, as you've seen, it was totally practical for the stations besides.
No, that might be a bit.
Yeah, it's great.
Any other questions for our, for the mod? All right, thank you very much. So, um, as is our custom, we have the Virginia rider shipping parking facility utilization, which is, um, in your packets. Any questions on that? There's a little bit of an uptick on ridership, which is good. All right, move on then to agenda item six, which is computer meter choice program. So, um, I know we went over this at the beginning when we did the public hearing, but this is, uh, MBTC is a partner with Calwell since twenty seventeen. To identify bond projects, help meters that travel on I sixty six inside development. Projects were submitted by localities and some from projects they have said that localities have identified some around planning processes. Last month, you received a whole squad list of twenty-two projects that are considered for funding under the I sixty six meter choice program. Those projects were evaluated based on their technical merit, cost effectiveness, and commission priorities. VDA has predicted that MBTC will have up to twenty million dollars available on this year's program. And the total requests are thirty-two million, so MBTC will not be funding all of the requests on the list. MBTC is currently in the midst of a public comment period that runs to May fifteenth, as we discussed. Uh, we had our hearing this evening, there was one last week involved search, and there'll be another at the VDA headquarters, uh, in Fairfax on May thirteenth. The comments made tonight will be included with all the other comments received and provided to the commission in advance of our action on June sixth. This program is in partnership with the Calwell Transportation Board, and CTV has final authority for funding of our specific projects. In advance of CTV action in June, uh, the board, the CTV is going to ask to be briefed on the applications received date out of May fourteenth workshop. I believe in Arlington, right? Uh, as such, staff are asking for approval to provide the CTV with a complete list of applications for support prior to MBTC's actions in June. However, it was only after MBTC's action in June that a proposal list of projects for funding will be formally provided to CTV for approval. So the resolution that we have tonight is to authorize the executive director to present to the CTV projects considered for funding under the FY twenty I sixty six meter choice program. So at this time, we'll have the post from on, we'll take any, any questions or comments on process at this point. They'll get the rock.
The missing distinction, we're not recommending them yet?
No, that'll be next month. So the distinction is that the CTV can ask for a briefing of all of the projects that were proposed. And they're having a workshop in Arlington on May fourteenth. And so the resolution is to authorize the executive director to present all of the projects to the CTV. But at our June sixth meeting, this body will vote on which project we are actually going to be presenting for the month.
My.
I also have a couple of questions for my desk, and I think every patent sector, uh, was a total revenue generated that, um, in the eighties, um, in the last year. They paid well over the one.
We are getting a portion of the toll from VDA, I don't know the exact number, and this is a projection for next year. But VDA does pay for a number of things, including maintenance of facility, lease, um, administration of the tolls. And then they provide an estimate to MBTC, which is twenty million. So my expectation is that it's more than twenty, I don't have that exact, I don't remember.
But outside of the administration of the toll, there's no money that, uh, if it needs, it needs to be paid. Additional revenue that all pack, VDA or the general.
Well, they're administering the facility, so they are holding on funding to do that, as I said, like.
But it can't be used for anything other than.
Oh, no, 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 it's, yeah, I mean, they've got, yeah, it's all, well, and honestly, the revenues from this facility, and this is the same rules that we have, have to be used to benefit that facility. So they can't be used for anything outside of benefiting the inside development. Both VDA, the revenues that they get and the revenues that we get have to benefit that toll, so they can't take those funds and use them elsewhere in the state, for example.
Well, because of the, uh, we're going to be, uh, toll revenues, especially if you add the end base tolls. Um, we've probably talked about this before, I'm just forgetting, how are we, how are we going to afford, like, the rights to ours if funding is short of forty year and more. How is it, they're going to project with us, they're five?
So we've been given a revenue estimate, um, for the coming fiscal year from VDA. The projects that we do and we identify for funding, each of those have agreements and they are reimbursable agreements. So they're always subject to the availability of funds.
So the revenue, you know, you can't fund it based on the bottom of that.
So, and the jurisdictions come back for reimbursement on that, so we actually have a capital hub still living on that.
Other questions or comments on the program, Kelly or Rock?
Kind of general, I think somebody's, uh, told me, it's, it doesn't seem, here the model of the, uh, the program administration. I kind of thought that we would, especially in a four hundred, say this would be original, we would see startup costs, and it were, um, the, the onset. But this is a constant, so maybe we could check and play that, why that didn't trail off, uh, you know.
Sure. Sure, so there's a couple of different elements, actually startup costs were borne by VDA. So we, um, they actually paid for the initial set for the program with their resources and their contractors. So the very first year, we're already borne by VDA, and I don't have the budget for that, they basically provided us a whole team of consultants. So the funding that's used now, um, is to do all the performance measurement, um, and the evaluation, reviewing invoices, public engagement, and all those sorts of things. So, um, and so we did a cost assessment based upon the needs to be able to effectively administer the program. But the first year was borne by VDA, not by this program.
So, uh, again, probably with your, the, the evaluation component, obviously that would be evaluation of the, uh, applications. The more performance, uh, that we established that, uh, these projects are accountable, you know, make it correct for the, the, uh, outcomes.
Sure, absolutely, so every single project, they, when they submit their application, they do estimated performance, and that's what we use to evaluate the projects. When they submit the invoices, they provide that information, we also get the annual report on those as well. Um, so we, we, and we will be responding to your requests that you sent, um, obviously. Um, we, uh, to give an example, um, when we fund our transit projects, when we have funded transit projects, we're actually at the point now that we're seeing applications to continue that funding. So in those instances, those projects have come back, I can think of there's an express customer, Stone Ridge, um, actually came back and reapplied. And with their data, and they're actually showing even better than expected performance.
It must be.
On, they are, um, and so, but we do actually, um, the reporting on this program is pretty robust. We are required to receive that information as a part of our grant agreements with the, um, project sponsors. We also will be reporting that to the Calwell Transportation Board, that's something that's been included within our agreements, is reported on the forms of those projects.
As much as we're making recommendations, is, is this going to be delivered to us on request or will be posted somewhere, or should we just not be?
Or.
For the performance data, they have to show us, you know, what we're, we're doing back to the project, this kind of product, which ones are overperforming, underperforming? But the, uh, that, 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 for us, the recommendations, we have to make them.
So, um, we obviously provide that too on the application, so we see returning applications where we have a number of them, you'll see that. Um, we have not set up a routine, we plan on, and we can, I can work with the commission as to how regularly we do that. A number of these projects, obviously, the awards were done just last, middle of last year, so they're up and running, um, but, uh, we can check.
Yeah, there isn't, I mean, there isn't there yet because we just funded it. I think the program advisory committee was, uh, I think, over the side of the project, so that'd be the natural place for the reporting. I think one, one of the challenges with some of the projects is that they were capital projects, they were capital funding essentially. So how do you measure something when you're building it, it's going to be there, you know, in the case of the Stone Ridge Transit lot, it's in the salt, it's in the latter county. The lot is there now, you know, we will get use of it forever. So you put a metric on that is a little difficult because, you know, on an annualized basis, yeah, you have a ridership number, you can see like people are using it for that year, but it's actually an investment that's going to go on until we decide not to deposit it. So I think that's one of the challenges with that, but the ongoing, you know, operational things, I think we could do.
Well, one of the things that we've been able to do when we look at ongoing operations, we're only four years, um, which, based upon guidance from folks in the transit industry, two years is a good sense, you have two years of operations to get a sense of whether you're going to have good ridership. And so what we found, we've had, we've finished two, and those projects that were performing, they appeared to come back and they're demonstrating that performing. We actually do have, uh, one project from the first year, they did not come back for funding. So they tried it, they did not look, they did not come back for funding again. So there's a nice relief valve, I think, for that in terms of demonstrating performance, we do not provide anything in perpetuity. They've got to come back every so many years to basically make the case again for funding.
Other questions or comments? If not, then I will, um, ask for a motion to authorize the executive director to present the Calwell Transportation Board projects considered for funding under FY twenty I sixty six meter choice program. Move, move in second. Cut from the motion, all appear to motion say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody in his name, motion carry at the end.
Absolutely, so we actually are looking for, um, a meeting time in the summer, that's, I think we've got some scheduling challenges as we offer you. The plan is for that committee to get together this summer, to work with staff, to remind, revise, and refine the criteria in advance of next call for projects. That is something that we're working on scheduling right now.
Right, so you, you wanted to set some of the issues and make relevant discussions and, and all of that, uh, and the issue about how you measure minutes sections contribution versus passes contribution. The issue about whether we want to run plus, uh, uh, the, the, which would be, uh, the, the, so we, uh, the issue that will continue to be worked on and discussed and refined. Maybe you can actually, or have any ideas to keep up with, uh, so.
Yeah, I think, and we went through that process last year, based on going through the first year, um, there were a dozen things in the criteria, they are our criteria. So if we, you know, don't like the way things are turning out with these, it is our criteria. So we, we have the ability to change it and put it, put it into that process, I think we should be, um, not changing it too much. But, um, you know, on an annualized basis, is that just the core? Just come out and talk to us?
It's more on having dinner or raise.
Get worse.
Thank you. Mr. Clark will be hosting us and raise after. Yeah, anyway, all right. Anything else on, on that? The next item then is market research and marketing communication and strategy contract update, I don't know if there's anything that we want to say, it was a written report. Um, open up questions on that, anybody had any? Okay, enough, moving on to BRE, um, there are no BRE action items this month, um, and Mr. Allen is not here. However, um, there were, there have been some developments, we'll say, related to PTC implementation. And so our BRE operations, uh, board chair, Katie Crystal, will give us an update.
Indeed, and we're joined by your sports and welcome, the system can help answer technical questions that elude me. Um, you all may or may not have heard from constituents and seen some non-distributables who write on the Manassas line. Um, Unfortunate System, which has, uh, a many-year record of very strong on temporal orbit, is really suffering under the control. On temporal orbit specifically on the Manassas line, is still below fifty percent, um, which is not a, um, a percentage that we're excited about. Certainly not always content to sustain over time. Um, these are largely related to the implementation of public supplemental, um, which I'm happy to, to try to describe with the best of my ability, my colleague Joe, to help further. Um, essentially, this is a federal mandate system critical for safety, uh, that has to do with how the trains speak to the tracks and vice versa. Um, we are doing it for the, for the benefit of our riders and our, um, public, also because, again, it is a federal mandate. Um, this system has been testing in some form or fashion for the better part of a decade at this point. December through February, the BRE system, um, uh, or the BRE rather, was testing PTC implementation, um, on our two lines on non-revenue train of the night. We're able to iron out what will follow up with keys to the system. Um, and generally speaking, the Fredericksburg implementation, which is the line that we run on, operated by CSX, uh, went relatively smoothly with relatively few pickups. Um, we have run into some snags in the Manassas line that since, since the beginning of April. So for three weeks, there have been significant delays that the most significant driver to just speak about in, in very brief, has to do with how the trains turn around. Nine of our sixteen trains would turn around at Long, or excuse me, at Union Station, which is the DC terminus. That restart up process generally takes two to four minutes because of issues stemming from PTC implementation, it's taking ten different teams. And when that rail is as congested as it is and the trains aren't as close together as they do, that's caused really significant backlogs. So the important thing to know, uh, is that the ACE team, the BRE staff, uh, the engineers, um, have been working on this, a number of improvements having to do, um, uh, with, uh, the, the communication system between those railroad and BRE operators, um, having to do, uh, the dispatch system and so forth, but then Joe can probably describe the way to that. Um, it's a series of sequential steps, we are very optimistic, um, that the, the system will be back to its high eighty, ninety percent on temporal orbit by next week if all wins. Um, but in the meantime, we are really appreciative of our riders who are used to, like, rely on, the system is much better on temporal orbit than the system's had the last couple of weeks. Um, and really appreciate their situation. So, um, if you have, uh, constituents or those who are presenters interested in learning more about the details of it, I know Joe and I are both available. We can also connect you to our engineering staff, we're happy to talk to any individuals, I've had some conversations with riders. We've also been doing meet the management this week, which is one of the, uh, BRE staff, as well as the operations board members, I'll be in Crystal City, uh, next week, or two weeks from now. Um, go out and meet with riders on the, on the afternoon commute, and I know that they've had a chance to talk to them, and explain the origins and the problems, which is the most important thing. We've certainly learned this with metros, that folks' riders generally are less interested in an explanation than they're interested in a solution. So, uh, I am very optimistic this is going to be a job that we, um, certainly by, uh, the next time we can be as commissioned, if there's anything. Uh, Joe, if you'd like to add anything before.
No, you certainly, I hope you're all that I'm having.
Good.
Mr. Corbin?
Have you put something out on Train Talk or something, explaining one, the issue of, mostly for, in fact, I think it's a big fix, actually, a big, careful, I got last night, was, this horrible PTC system that you have, you know, put into place, is destroying this, when are you going to get rid of it? And that gets to my second point was, my first thought was, I don't get what the hell we're talking about, but we need to get a break, and that's my line.
Yeah.
Keep up on my, and I didn't know if there was a problem, so.
That's a great, that's a good point, the final point about the OSPO, and I can take responsibility for getting the PTC information out to colleagues, all of those after, trying to let you know tomorrow. Great point. I know as far as ridership comes, a couple of things I've seen in the years, people are fulsomey about it, but there has been, there's a detailed presentation online, actually, we can share that the commission was really interested, about PTC, what causes, what are the differences on the project versus the Manassas. I know that has been sent out, Karen from New York, she used to work for MBTC, joined BRE just in time, to look at that, through, yeah, through Train Talk, through Twitter, Facebook. I've spoken to media and your staff, I look forward to sharing this information as quickly as possible. Exactly what you said, the most important question, please stick with us, it's, it's nearly fixed, right? So people don't think the system's.
Speaking of your summary upfront, this, this is what happens, this is why we're starting to, 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 not make people.
Read the whole piece, yeah. So Joe, is there anything else you can share about, like, on that?
No, we, we have actually already implemented a couple of variations to the way we were doing the implementation, and we saw that effect today, as a matter of fact, of the Manassas line. This morning, things went really, really well, as a long-term, all this outcome, but that was, I think, plus a, so we've seen the short-term solution that is going to get us to the longer term solution, which always seems to be, so, and then the longer-term solution, which is, which is, which is, which is, but we, 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 we
But to clarify, that is, what riders will see is the fix, the near-term fix, the long-term is kind of back in.
Yeah, exactly. They, they won't know the difference between the fix that we put in place basically today and the long-term.
They'll just know that they're trading back for us within a matter of weeks.
I mean, this is, this is good to know, and to, John, your point, is, I know in Alexandria and other people are playing, using BRE, I've heard of Shellhead, a couple of weeks.
If it is, right? Way, for that, you have bigger problems.
All right. Discussion on BRE. Thank you very much for the updates. All right, DRPC.
Sure, just as I mentioned before, we are having our public hearing, this associated with our six-year plan, on Monday at VDOT headquarters, which will also be joined during this group as well. Our six-year plan, or Rock Sixer Plan, a little leaked a few weeks ago, if you haven't looked at it, I encourage you to. It does include, the VDOT portion actually does include the smart scale recommendations. There were some transit projects recommended for funding. Some of the distributions of funding, though, may, may actually change by the time the next draft is released, due to some additional funding that's been made available, or, it revenue increases, and Secretary Valentine will talk a little bit more about that on Monday night. This is also the first time that we have prioritized our cap, our transit capital projects through the new merit program, using, it was based on the new legislation that had been in place last year. I'd say that the prioritization process went up very well, and went about the way that we thought it would go. We were able to fund the majority of the projects that were submitted. There were some that kind of fell towards the bottom consistently, some things like administrative technology that we did not score as well, and some of the criteria that we have. But more importantly, this is the first year that we are going to be allocating all of our capital funds to a 68% state match. Before, it was a tiered match of, it'd be 68%, 34%, or 17%, but now all of the grantees will be receiving 68% regardless of the type of project that's getting funded. So we hope as well that that will help free up some other local monies that, on the capital plan side, as well, be applied to other things. Similarly, our operating funds were allocated based on performance metrics. We did allocate operating assistance, or one year of transitional assistance to a number of systems that saw a relative decrease in their share of, compared to what they normally have received under the old formula for this year. But a lot of the changes that we saw, some of which were different from what we predicted, a lot of which had to do with some big changes on the performance metric side that we have to be incorporating this year for the first time. We also are allocated funds for the first time from the BW settlement funds that we received earlier this year, we're allocated funds for replacement electric vehicles, and this again is for specifically for projects that are, for electric buses that are replacing diesel buses. So a number of buses at Dash and Alexandria are being funded, and also for Blacksburg as well, which are two systems that are in the process of converting all of the, all the, so, another new thing that's in the six-year plan on our rail program is we have started to allocate a significant amount of funds inside for the Long Bridge, and our rail program includes some of our rail enhancement funds and some of our infrastructure passenger rail funds as well. Recognizing that we all have funding commitments for this in the future, not knowing exactly what that's going to be yet, we are starting to prioritize a lot of those funds and start putting towards that. When you, and then if your total amount, in this year's six-year plan, is about 240 million, when you add to that a number of projects that are on the Virginia side to support the implementation of Long Bridge, such as the four-track project in the Tunic River of Alexandria, the third-track project from Ockhorn, Naperville, Franconia, and some other supporting BRE projects, the total in the six-year plan is closer to about 780 million. So it's a significant set aside of rail funding, and, again, this is over a six-year period for this program of projects, but it's a new, it's something very new on our rail program, which has really statewide implications on the rest of the, and that's all for now. Thanks for the confirmation.
Any questions for Director?
I just have a question, like, is the expansion of your private sector, which is really, and, 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 is kicking in, and all of us to support?
We're working for a funding plan right now with, with CSX, with Elavon Regional Partners as well, as well as, we don't have any specifics right now, or it's very iterative process.
Well over a billion.
For the, the cost of the Long Bridge, is, is probably going to be, once the costs are fully escalated, I think it's close to $2 billion. I should remind you, it's actually a one and a half mile corridor, it's not just the Rusty Ridge that everybody looks at next to the boarding street.
All the interchange on this, and the, and, and, and all the other stuff.
It includes a lot of infrastructure, it's actually a total of six structures, including one structure that will be going, is being built over 395, and a lot of other infrastructure all the way up towards Long Bridge, so it's actually a very big corridor, not just a one structure.
Much as you touched on smart scale, I know that's really not the reason, but if you can, if, 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 if there's perhaps some of the ratio definitions of, the, the ratios, or, 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 definitions of, maybe, the, 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 the,
I, I'm not aware, I'm really not, I'm, it's so, but I'd have to really, and so back with our conversation.
Anyone else? Move on to our executive director's report.
Great, so just a couple of highlights and things that are going on, some of which this body will be seeing in the coming months. There's a number of different regional engagements that our staff is sitting at the table of, I know overtime, we've been hearing a lot about fare payment, fare payment technologies. Right now, there's actually a region-wide piloting of upgrades to the fare boxes that are on the bus systems, and so I know that Loudon, and I'll leave it for, I don't remember, who's being the pilot right now, Loudon and Fairfax and Dash are all heavily involved, working with Womata on this, just basically fixing really, really old technology on the buses, so this is not insignificant in the effort, so this is happening right now. Another thing is that we've been a part of scoping of a new initiative that is actually coming from Secretary Valentine's Office of Transportation Innovation, which is a project that's intended to be funded publicly by the CTV next month, which is going to really look at a whole bunch of data, dashboards, parking counters, potentially mobile applications, all to do with how people move around the region. This is something that the authority had proposed to Commonwealth, it's actually been the VDOT-led project, but DRBT reached out to all transit agencies, and say we've already been at the table, been participating in the scoping of it. If you hear the R and 3P initiative, that's what it's called, but it's actually really, it's something, a great, great example of them working, again, us, the authority, VDOT, DRBT, and all the transit agencies in the area, on what has a really promising transportation initiative. The other thing is I had the opportunity to get part in VDOT's Highway Automation Strategic Planning Workshop earlier this week, and yes, when I got the invitation to VDOT Highway Automation, I was sort of struck, you know, why to be there, but I actually, I realized there's a huge nexus for transit fleets and the automation, and so I was really glad to be a part of that conversation. Folks from Womata, actually a number of the jurisdictions were there as well. So this is the beginning of a strategic plan, but moving towards automation, something, whether we're on some of these smaller shuttles or fleets in general, has both a technology as well as a governance policy and funding impact, so there's a lot of things that happen there. They're also very engaged in Womata's Bus Transformation Project efforts. I know many of your regional staff has as well worked on both the technical and the strategic advisory teams for that. There's a lot of activity going on, and we have asked the team to come and bring this for June on that activity. This is really talking about strategically, how should buses be serving the region with a focal point, on what services should be provided by Womata, and what can be provided by other providers. So this is something we're definitely watching and paying attention to, especially as we look to allocation of funding, allocation of services, there's a lot of interesting things to talk about with that, and so we're looking forward to them coming back to the commission at June. Upcoming events that are happening, we talked a lot about this, May 13th, Spring Transportation Meeting out of VDOT, which will be immediately followed by CTV's meeting, which is actually going to be over in Crystal City on the 13th and 15th. The Virginia Transit Association is having their annual conference, it's down in the Norfolk area, May 29th and 30th, and I, I realize that I neglected to say some thoughts to both Ms. Boliva and Ms. Hudson, but I believe that both of you are being recognized for outstanding contributions to public transportation in the Commonwealth of Virginia, so congratulations on those recognitions, I just had to do that shout-out. And then finally, we do have a beautiful new office week, is still coming together. However, we do plan on having an open house the evening of our July meeting, which is actually July 11th because of the Florida July holiday, so keep your eyes open for invitations on that, because we're getting it pretty for all of you. They'll probably have us a mission maybe up there that night, if that makes sense. Yep, and we have room for you, so that is what I want.
It is very nice, I actually think the meeting is, 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 so, we'll be okay up there. All right, any questions for Kate? Okay. Seeing none then, we, financial items, it's got available, if anybody has any questions. It's got out of them, so send in an email. All right, and with that, our meeting is adjourned.